What's going, Ken?
Okay.
How about you?
Good. Cub Scout Scott here and it got really quiet. I don't know what it is. We don't need to behave.
That's funny.
Yeah. All right, very good. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Truster.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Lewis.
Here. All right. Any agenda changes before we get started? All right, with that, we're gonna turn it over to our guest speakers and I might just turn it over to the manager to start us off.
Yeah. Happy to introduce the Cub Scout troop from Sagatuck. I had the complete pleasure of meeting with this troop. I think it was a week and a half ago, two weeks ago. And they had reached out to me because one of their assignments is to meet a leader in the community or something like that. And so I was very fortunate to be reached out to. And I gave the Cub Scouts two assignments to walk in with. I'll take this mask off so people can hear me at home. Two assignments to walk in with. One was, can they come up with a design for our beanbag toss boards that we have in Wick's Park? Because we're gonna send those boards over to the high school so they can paint them or the middle school art class. So we wanted to see what kind of designs they could come up with. The other assignment was a much more broad assignment, which was, can you come up with some park amenities? Either at Oval Beach or Mount Bald Head? Some improvements for the parks that they would like to see. So they came in and these gentlemen are beyond their years. They super impressed me with their knowledge of Sagatuck, their design concepts. But they're also very curious about, did Sagatuck have full insurance coverage? Did we talk to the attorneys about some, could we talk to the attorneys about some of these things? And could we come up with some bond issuances to fund some of these things? And I'm like, whoa, when I was your age, I was just playing Nintendo and just like, that was it. So anyways, we garnet, the mayor and I talked about it and we wanted you all to come back and present to the rest of the city because you're awesome. So that's where we're at.
All right. Very good. So what do you got planned there? I know you've got some things you want to share with us. So maybe, maybe some introductions. Yeah, there you go.
All right, should we start with the cornhole? Who had the first idea there? All right. This is Susan Carr, a fifth grader.
Hi.
So, um, for the cornhole, I thought maybe we could have like a sunset or like a beach scene. But also, um, some of us thought that maybe we should have like the Trailblazer logo.
Okay. Very good.
That'd be great.
All right. There you go.
This is Joey Bolander, he is a fourth grader.
So, uh, for my idea, I thought we should have the Trailblazers logo on it. And the sun in the logo could be the hole that you try to get your beanbag through.
Nice.
I like it.
That's on the screen. We have to pull that up on the screen so everyone can see it at home.
This is Brady Palmer, also a fifth grader.
Uh, I was even thinking the Sagatuck S or the Trailblazers logo. And maybe the, I think I was on the call when Simon said the hole should be a sun.
Got it. Very good. Thank you.
Was the fifth idea yours? Christopher, was the fifth idea yours? All right, well, we also, when we were brainstorming, had the idea of making Mount Baldy on the, on the cornhole boards.
Great idea, too.
All right, and now who wants to start? We're talking about their ideas for the parks. All right, this is Christopher, he is also a fifth grader.
I was thinking for the, um, the playground at Oval Beach, where there's a swing set and concessions, maybe we could add something like a, possibly more playground equipment, maybe a seesaw?
Okay.
Something like that.
All right, very good.
This is Lincoln Hardy, a fifth grader.
Um, for the, I thought we could add a park and maybe some like canoe and kayak rentals at the beach.
Okay.
Mine is kind of like Lincoln, just rental equipment, like kayaks, paddleboards, boogie boards and things like that. Maybe life vests, too.
Um, so I thought maybe we should have like a zip line going down from the top of Mount Bald Head to the bottom.
Yeah.
This is what life's talking about.
Yeah. No doubt. Yeah.
Uh, so for my Oval Beach and Mount Bald Head project, I thought we could have a, um, some signs going up Mount Bald Head on the little platforms about the history of Mount Bald Head. And, um, at Oval Beach, we could do some facts about Lake Michigan.
Very good. All right. Nice. All right.
Anyone else have any other things?
Questions? Go ahead, Council.
Simon, I, I noticed that you suggested in addition to a zip line and merry-go-round. That's kind of a sweet idea. Good imagination, I like that.
And then just for clarification, was it a zip line from the Bald Head Tower to Lake Michigan or to the river? Or both?
Ooh.
Hey, okay.
Mr. Gardner going in.
Well, welcome, boys. Glad that you're here. And thanks for the ideas. As soon as I read this, I said, you know, Simon says, for those of you that remember the game, I'd like to be appointed to the Kids Parks Advisory Council, which we don't yet have, yet have. But I think this is a great opportunity to tap into your knowledge and your experience and your skills here and actually just have some fun with this. So, um, might be something we'll be thinking about. So Simon, you put your name on the documents and you get nominated for things.
Parks are important to us.
Thank you. Very good. Good. All right. Other questions from council? We really appreciate you all doing this. Thanks for, I, I was really excited when Ryan said, the manager sent the photos of you all here because I was most intrigued where everybody sat. I know there was a little bit of a battle for where you sat, right? Yeah? You remember where?
Simon enjoyed the gavel.
Ah, very good. It can be kind of fun, can't it? Very good. All right. Thank you. Hopefully we'll see you again. All right. Thank you. All right. Very good. Okay, with this, we're to the public comments portion on the agenda. We welcome anybody who's in the audience, either here in the room or on Zoom. If you'd like to submit your public comment, please limit your comments to three minutes. Introduce yourself and that's it. What do we have? Public comment on any agenda item? Yes? There you go.
Right here.
There you go.
So I am the project manager on the Butler next door. And I put on the, I requested on the agenda today to, uh, propose a temporary road agreement across the park from the Butler into the Yacht Club parking. What's led me to that is we've got into the de-watering of the low-grade footings in the project. And the water table is up higher than what we thought with soil borings. So our de-watering loop is actually cutting off a lot of our site access. So we've only got about a truck with coming into the site. It's like page five on that.
Yeah, but if you will, why don't we, because this is our first agenda item, which we really wanted to get into some discussion on.
Okay.
So I didn't want you to be held to just three minutes.
Oh, sure.
Actually have a pretty good discussion about it.
Yeah.
So if you want to hold that thought, then we'll, we'll come back to it. All right. Well, yeah, just hold that thought. Anybody else on, on the line, Jamie, that would like to contribute public comment?
Christine's waving her hand.
All right. Hi, Christine.
Hi, guys, how is everyone?
Good.
Good. Um, so I know that we're voting on Monday for the outdoor expanded dining. I did notice that in the fee structure, it's the whole fee is due at the time of the application. So that's in April.
Yeah.
So I would, it would be a big chunk of money to pay in April going, going into the summer.
Okay.
So I don't know how others, people, I, I mean, I can only speak for myself. I mean, obviously, I'll sell a kidney to get my spots. But in the same sense, in the same sense, I don't know if there could be like a percentage and then we pay a percent. Do you know what I mean? Because I always just envisioned it would be like a monthly rental kind of fee structure. So I was just a little shocked that it would be, um, all due upfront.
Okay.
So that's all I have to say about all of that. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Steve?
Hi, my name is Steve Thomas from Stogie Cigar Shop. I was just, uh, wondering, what was the fee? Because I guess I missed that from the last Zoom meeting.
What was the fee?
Yes, for, I'm sorry, for the pop-up patios that Christine was just referring to.
It's in the packet, it's $200, it's parking space. Per month. Per month.
Per month, and that would be April 1st, after you guys talk about that on Monday and vote on it. Okay, perfect. Thank you, that's all I had.
All right, thank you. Others? Nope. All right. Very good. With that, we'll move on and then we'll be able to. So our first item is the Butler request for temporary road. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We received a request from the Butler Construction Group with their outdoor patio to utilize a portion of the park to bring in their equipment. And we've included some, some of the material that they had sent us via email. When I received the request, I did send them an email and had a conversation with them that I had some concerns with their, with their ask. And I told them that it was a no. And I, and explained why. But I also said that you can come to the council because I'm not the end-all, be-all, you know, just the manager guy. And so the list of the concerns that I had expressed to them, just so you all know, is that, one, we, we should have a construction schedule. We really don't know how far into the season they're gonna go, if they're gonna be driving heavy equipment across the park. Certainly that could lead to a few concerns, one being turf deterioration. The other big concern, and I've heard this from the tree board, is brute compaction of the, of the willow tree in the park. The beloved tree. Also, just general aesthetics, because they had mentioned about putting up fencing for some of the, uh, the platforms they're gonna put on the ground. I forget, durable base that they would put on the ground. So it's a small park and, you know, there's already heavy construction going on. And so aesthetics are always a concern. And then just kind of the general approval process for the project, right? Staging logistics, this would have been, I, I know you run into issues all the time, but staging of construction equipment is something I had reached out previously about and really hadn't received a good answer on where they were gonna stage your construction equipment and materials. And then, of course, this is gonna cause, potentially cause some issues as far as staff doing some administrative work and as far as entering in some, into agreements as far as any property damage that they cause. So that's gonna, you know, just be an extra workload for, for city staff. And then just kind of, in general, only being here for one year, I know there's a lot of sensitivities to all parks, but this park in particular, I mean, we had a discussion about just putting up a historical sign and how many, you know, how many concerns came up with just like a three-by-three historical sign? And I explained that to the construction crew, that there's just generally, generally a lot of sensitivities and I'm a no, but they can come into city council and make their ask and a presentation. So here they are.
All right. Very good. Now.
Right. Thanks for the detail on that. Appreciate the background. But yeah, I started to say the request is to put that temporary road using durable base, which is a, a poly product, which is made of plastic, it's four and a half inches thick, and it's made for temporary road construction. And basically, it's made to protect whatever's beneath it. I've used this product on a couple other projects where we had soft soil or where we were trying to protect some things. And it works well. So the proposal would be to create a 20-foot-wide easement, temporary access easement through that park. And I have a agreement that I've done on other projects that I could present for you to review. And we could sign before we begin any installation in the park. But, um, that's kind of the route that I was hoping to accomplish. It gets us from the site over to the parking area at the Yacht Club. It kind of accomplishes two things. One, it gives us access into the, the actual structural portion of the patio while we're working on the water main, because there's a water main that has to go out to Butler. And once we get into that, it basically cuts off all access. So this would allow us to continue to be moving on that building project while we're working on the water main out to the road, which will help our schedule overall. We've got a hard drop dead date with the Butler, Pinnacle Construction does, of May 15th for turnover. So they want to get this thing open by May 15th to get staffing hired and get everything in the works before busy season comes. So that's what we're working towards. There's a few pictures, you can see there, that's one of them laid out, but it's actually a 14-foot-wide panel by, I think it's four feet deep. And they all interlock and there's a twist lock between each panel that keeps them from separating and moving. And then they just float right on top of the ground there. And once we're done, you come through with a small excavator and just pull them up with those key locks. And they basically just pull right off, back yourself out. Though you're, there won't be any tracks or any compaction to the soil other than what the mat weighs. And in the previous projects that I have done, we haven't disturbed any of the ground. But as part of that easement write-up that I put together, it says in there, Pinnacle would be responsible for any damages or any replacement that would need to happen. All the costs are being covered by Pinnacle and Redwater. So it's really just trying to find a happy medium for us to keep going on the site. And I know that that park is sacred to Sagatuck and we're just the general contractors coming in town. So we're just trying to open the discussion and come up with a solution where we can kind of all work together. A second option, if, if the park is totally off limits, is the property line between the Butler and the, the small park here in the corner. It's kind of split right there between those, those two, that green space there is split in half. So if this wouldn't be an option, a second alternative would basically just be able to allow us to get on the other side of that fencing area. So this is the property line. Our access is here. This is Sagatuck property, so our fence is there, we can't access that. But if we could get through there, it would allow us to work on this water main while we could still get over to the site. So that's kind of the second choice, if, if this would be totally off limits.
Okay. All right. Questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I understand, you know, the water table's higher and I appreciate that you guys are very serious to address all of the issues that you have with plumbing and, and making the improvements. I have a few questions. One is, what is your timetable for this temporary easement? That's my first question.
So in a perfect world, it would be through project duration. But in, if that's not an option, our, our shortest timeframe would be four to six weeks to get that water main installed.
Okay, so preferably through May 15th, but at the, at the least four to six weeks.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd say four is doable if we have that access.
Okay. And, um...
Which would be then March 31st, end of March, if you started right away.
Uh, yeah, we've got all of our permits in hand. I'd have to check on materials, see if they could get going next week. But we'd probably start first of March, so it'd be through the month of March.
All right, continue, Holly.
And then would you, um, consider a bond or an escrow for damages to the park?
Yeah. We do that all the time. And we can do that in the form of a check, depending on the amount, or we can get an actual bond put in place with a bond company.
Okay. Okay, that's a, thank you.
Just to, can, can, did you want to ask another question? Did you have a question?
No, I didn't. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Mayor, if I may.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Just to build on Holly's question, it sounds like you've got the materials sort of at the ready. There's a lot of issues with the supply chain at the moment, you know, things like mains and things of that nature. Do you have everything you need for the project or?
As far as the building itself?
Well, no, for the, for the bit, for the bit while you're, while you're gonna need this road in place. Everything to get that done within, within that timeframe that, that Holly's, uh...
Yes. So the durable base mats are a rental product.
Yeah.
And they've got those in the yard. We could get those within a week. All of my steel for the building itself, I've gone through shop drawings already and that's into the shop in fab.
Okay.
We're working on helical piers right now. They're supposed to have those done in about a week, which is our starting point. And then we'll start building foundations beyond that. But lead times, I've checked all that and not having any issues with it. So I think we'll be good.
Good.
And that's a hard question I've been being asked by butlers, because, I mean, it's a, it's important for them to get it done as well. So.
Go ahead, Lauren.
So, um, just looking at Ryan's concerns, I guess, staying away from the tree, obviously. I mean, what can be done that they can get this project going? If, if you're not staging there, you're gonna have to stage, where are you gonna put all your equipment if it's not in the Yacht Club's parking lot?
Um, we've, we've discussed placing some things down at the end of Butler. We didn't want to stockpile the dirt just because of the overall size of it. So that's why we have been running it to the parking lot.
Yeah.
But we have talked about staging re-steal and steel down on that end. But as far as I know, putting stuff in that Yacht Club parking lot was okay. So that's where we've been doing it. But if it's an issue, we can, we can change it if that needs to happen.
And then as far as fencing, was there supposed to be some sort of fencing around the actual, you know, driveway material?
If we, if we do install that durable base system, I'm gonna put the same temporary fencing that we have around the site on each side of the durable base road. So that if a contractor pulls in there and doesn't know that there's a mat down there and decides he wants to drive off into the, the park, you know, because it's green space, thinks it's parking lot, that's why we'll put that, that fence up on each side of it to prevent people from doing that. So just kind of, it closes it to the area we're working. And as far as the tree, I've drawn that line as far to the, closest to the road as possible. I mean, if we can get closer than that, we'll do that. I, I agree, I want to stay as far away from that tree as possible. But with these mats, I don't, there's no rip damage that should happen because that, they're made for that compression. It's a 600-pound per inch that these things can take. I mean, there's pictures of giant submarines being hauled in on them. So I have no concern with protecting that ground with these.
Yeah.
Mr. Byler, thank you for coming to see us today. I'm Russ Gardner, City Council. The information that you provided was extremely helpful, so I understand how you're going to propose to protect the park. And you're right, that park, I don't know if I'd use the word sacred, but about as close as we get here in Sagatuck. And so a couple things, and I completely agree with the city manager's approach on this in terms of questions. I would have exactly the same questions and did after reading this. You did answer a couple of them in terms of, in terms of duration and so forth. Would definitely like to see a draft agreement in terms of what this is gonna mean for the city in terms of your responsibility, as well as what the city's going to receive and our citizens, more importantly, are gonna receive from the use of their land for private enterprise. So I think more importantly, though, this is not something I think to be entered into quickly, but I sense you've got some urgency around this from a, from a project standpoint. So let's say that it was a no, what's the, what, what, what's your plan C? If there's a no.
So if it's a no, it's gonna shut down our schedule on the building if we have to put the water main in without, because we have no access while we're putting that water main in. So I would have to find the spot and the schedule that makes the most sense to cut off access. And then we would cut off that site, try to do as much as we can on the building, get all our material in there and work on it as we can. But it's gonna make the overall schedule probably push out, I would say, and make it more difficult.
Thank you. And I'm not speaking on behalf of council at all, I'm just imagining what our thought process is going to be here.
Yep.
I don't recall having had a, an ask of this type in my memory. So this is all new for me. So I want to be thoughtful and considerate. And more importantly, respect the residents of our town that uses parking in winter time. So I appreciate being here and you've answered a few questions that I had. And I look forward to seeing some additional information regarding how we can maybe get into agreement on this. And...
And I do have that draft agreement. I can forward it to you, Ryan, or?
Sure. Okay. Yeah. Perfect. Just Scott, yeah, just one more, just want to, so we're all on the same page. I'm just looking at the... Is your alternative position possibly coming off of water kind of just straight down in this direction? Or is it coming off of Butler in this direction? And do you have any estimate on what that distance would be compared to the 200 feet we're talking about?
So their plan B?
Let your plan be, I guess, yeah.
Well, Plan B would actually be going, it's directly on the opposite side of our fence. Can I step up there?
Please, yeah.
Step up to the window, I'm pointing out the window.
We have a laser pointer.
Yeah. We have a pointer.
There you go.
So right now, we are accessing right up along this sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The property line splits this green space right here. So this, between the courtyard fence and our fence, this is state property.
Okay.
So if this is an option, that we could continue if I, if we could get this access on that east ground.
Right.
And what's, you know, what's?
Then while we're working on this water main,
Yep.
we can basically drive around it on the state property.
I see.
And what's that distance? That's Scott's question. What is that distance? I mean, it's obviously not as long.
200, I believe, 207 I saw.
It's probably...
Okay, so it's about almost a third.
The only downfall of this burden is it keeps us on this road here.
Right.
So that's kind of why I was looking for this. But yes, that, that would solve the issue.
Okay.
Okay.
We're just so tight there.
Yeah.
If we could get on the other side of the fence, it allows us to get around that.
So, yeah, so if Plan A and Plan B do not work, then you're basically on hold on installing the water main until the project is done and you remove the fence. So it sounds like the fence, the temporary fence that you've put up is what is halting your progress right now?
Well, it's the width there. It's the width. It's the width from the property, because that fence is on the property line. So it's the width from the property line to the sidewalk. Once we start digging a trench in there for the water main with the soils that we have, you have to, you have to offset the grade so it doesn't collapse. Then when you're doing water main, you have to get pretty deep. So, it's just that width from the property line to the existing sidewalk, which has snow melt in it. We don't have enough width there to do both, so. Yeah, we would either finish the building, put the water main in then, or I'll look at the schedule and try to find the best spot to stage everything and get it in there.
Holly, is there a precedent for doing this? Have we shut down a park for a private business or construction that any of us know?
Okay, any other questions from council?
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, so your alternative, uh, Plan B includes moving your equipment across that road. What, are these like really heavy weighty trucks that are gonna be moving, or what?
It's the loader that they've been running. The dirt that's in the parking lot now, that's the biggest piece of equipment that's gonna be running through there. But, I mean, it's a, it's a big size loader, yeah. It's bigger than that back, it's that one top right. About that size.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
So how are you guys getting the equipment in currently? And how would that change things going forward with the project, right? You guys are pretty much going right in front of the Butler, right? I mean, I see it all day, every day, so. Why couldn't you use that access point for the, going forward?
We can continue to use it until we have to start installing the water main, because the water main runs directly through that path.
Okay.
So, we can keep using it, it's just finding that point where we can install the water main while we continue to move on the building. That's where this would help.
And we can get into some of the construction details, but a four to six window to put that water main, it's seems like quite, quite a lengthy period of time to slap that in. Why, 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 why the length of time is, I mean, you're a construction expert, I'm not, but.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, four weeks is probably likely, but there's, there's steps, you gotta get your water main in, there's chlorination tests that need to happen, there's you have to put a riser into the sidewalk that needs to be tested. There's just a lot of steps you have to get through in order to get that in. So, a water main install usually doesn't happen less than three to four weeks, so.
Thank you.
And all this was because the water table is so.
That's what's driven us to this.
And in normal cases, what would you do without a water table like this?
Well, if the water table was where we thought it was with the soil boring. Our, our, our trench that we've dug for our water, we have a de-watering system set up, a bunch of little pipes that go down into the ground. So that trench actually comes across and over and cuts off a lot of that access. So, if that water table was up, it wouldn't be cutting off a lot of the access that we have now.
And you didn't, you didn't realize that the water table is high before you started the construction project?
Came out a week before we started construction and started digging, just to check the water table, and that's when we found out. It was a little bit higher. It's about a foot and a half higher than what we assumed.
So you, you did know about this before you started construction?
Well, we checked the test hole, and then that's when I sent Ryan that email, starting this conversation.
Okay, so, so, yeah, just to be clear, so it's, it's the de-watering trench, that's the, the, the whammy here, it's not the, the water main, because you always knew that was gonna have to go in. So it's the trench that's actually causing you to have to change the construction plans for access? Because the water main was always gonna have to go in.
Just, yeah, I suppose you could say, I mean, it's both, really. That trench now for our de-watering is affecting us today. I mean, we can't get to the back of the site right now because of that trench, but the water main also is an issue.
All right.
So that, that shows where our trench is now, and we weren't planning on going as far north with the.
All right, any other questions?
So, what you're saying is, you, if, if you are allowed to have this temporary easement, you would be able to continue to have construction on the building and do the water main. Otherwise, you would have to do one or the other.
Correct.
You would not be able to work on the building. So really, what you're asking us to do is access to the park so that you can get your entire project done.
By May.
By May, by your opening, hard call, opening date.
Yeah.
So really, it's just to keep on your construction schedule? Yes.
True.
Okay, all right, I'm just trying to understand the entire issue here. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on.
So Madam Mayor and Council, just a kind of general thought process going forward. I mean, would you like me to work with the construction company on developing some of those alternate plans, Plan B, Plan C?
Yeah, were you aware of the alternate plans?
We had talked about them briefly at one of the construction meetings that we had as far as staging equipment, such as at the end of Butler Street, and then moving equipment in that way, so. I'd be happy to do that in the next couple of days to bring in some other options. Again, I know the sensitivity to the park, so.
Yeah, personally, I, personally, I don't really enjoy the fact of heavy equipment going through that park, whether it's on a Dura base or not, because we know what that's gonna do to the ground. It's never been approved before for a private business. So personally, I have a hard time when we have road and other access points that are shorter or even main roads, so. I mean, this is why we have you here.
Sure.
This is your role. That's my opinion.
And how much further would it put them behind if they go through the access point closer to the restaurant? If they're just, if they're, that's their only spot that they can go in, how much further is it gonna be, like, well past May fifteenth?
We still have our friend here, Aaron.
Yeah, it could set you back about three or four weeks, so like into June?
Okay. All right.
Yeah, okay, please do that. I'll, I'll reach out to you and work on some alternate plans and.
Yep. Thank you. All right, next up, we have several board of review items. I'll let the manager take them one at a time. Board of Review March alternate dates.
Yeah, this is a housekeeping item. You'll see this every year, setting updates for the board of review. This is on page seventeen of your packet. Any questions? It'll come up on Monday.
Questions?
Also, just, yeah, a question, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead.
But it, um, so this is setting an alternate date when we should have been meeting on. So more my question of what's driving the need to have an alternate date set, opposed to the regular scheduled date?
To have the assessor on.
How are you doing, assessors?
Hi, folks.
Hi.
Yep, so I'm Tony, I'm your assessor, for those of you that don't know. Yeah, so we are asking for the alternate start date. This is, you know, a lot of townships or cities do this throughout the state of Michigan, so. It's just kind of a housekeeping issue, but, you know, we've got multiple assessing units that we have to be the assessor for. And it's kind of hard to be in, you know, four places at one time, right? So, we just want to make sure that we can be there. So by law, the assessor doesn't have to be at the, the March border review, but we certainly prefer to be there. And by doing the sixteenth instead of the fourteenth, the, that would allow us to do so.
Yeah.
That was my question.
Yeah, so just a little information, I was on the board of review for three years, and I think at least once, maybe twice, we moved the date, because Diane at that time was our assessor, and she had the same problem. Because she was managing several different municipalities, and it was just ease of schedule for her, because those are long days in March. Those are, what, eight hours one day and eight hours the next? So not only is it a lot of time for the board of review members, it's also quite a bit of time for the assessors, that whole time span. So this really helps them, and it, it also helps get all of your board of review members there from a scheduling perspective. Just from experience.
Thank you for addressing that, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next one.
This is poverty exemption. Yeah, poverty exemption, this is also a housekeeping item. This is on page nineteen of your packet. I believe this is coming to play a few times over the years, but again, we have our assessors here to go ahead and explain this item.
I know you've joined us, so go for it.
Yeah, so, you know, every year we have to update the poverty exemptions, the guidelines for them. So basically, what we're setting here are the income levels that are acceptable for, to receive a poverty exemption. So those are updated every year by Health and Human Services, and, you know, the guidelines that you have in front of you show that. In addition, we have to have an asset test, which is also included in this. We have to update that every year as well. But probably the more important issue that you see on these, because you'll see that this looks quite different from your prior poverty guidelines.
Yeah.
Is the state has changed the law to where, prior to this law change, board of reviews had a lot of flexibility with what they could do. They could, they could grant a partial poverty exemption based on seventy-five percent or thirty-two percent, you know, whatever they wanted to come up with. And the state lawmakers have said, you know what, no, no more of that. You have three options. You can be a hundred percent exempt, you can be fifty percent exempt, or you can be twenty-five percent exempt. So, you know, you'll see that in your income guidelines now for those percentages. Now, we cannot deviate from those percentages anymore like we used to be able to. The other thing that is removed from the guidelines is some verbiage that was very, very common in guidelines throughout the state was that board of reviews can deviate from these guidelines for insinuating circumstances. And the state has said, no, no more of that. These are your guidelines, you have to follow your guidelines. And if you don't follow your guidelines, we are gonna mark you deficient in your audit of minimum assessing requirements. So we had to remove some of that verbiage from the guidelines. So, fun stuff.
All right, Ross Gardner, City Council, thank you again for sharing this information. Actually, poverty guidelines, I'm in healthcare, we use the same guidelines for uncompensated care for patients. My question, though, for the city of Sagatuck, have we ever granted any percentage exemption for any property owner?
That's a good question. I, I can tell you, I used to work for Allen County twenty years ago, and not that I can never remember seeing a partial exemption.
Kind of curious if we've ever used this.
Yeah.
I'm not saying you haven't used it, but I don't think you've ever done a partial. Now, you may have granted a poverty exemption at a hundred percent rate, you know, a hundred percent exemption, but not, not a partial.
Okay, so we didn't do any sliding scale exemptions, it was either a hundred percent or.
Or zero.
We know of any properties that are exempt currently? I don't, I know this came, I know this issue came up last year, but I don't think anything happened with it.
Yeah, go ahead.
I actually looked into that today. We were looking into what, what kind of exemptions do we have to look forward to at the border review? And we do not currently have any poverty. We do have several veteran exemptions, but no part poverty currently.
Yeah, that's what I recall, was the veteran exception.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, go ahead, Holly.
I just wanted to say that as a city, I'm glad that we're doing it. I happen to live with the chair of the board of review, had a conversation with them about it, and he said we've never been able to offer it prior. And I know that there was at least one instance where there was a disabled party who could have used it, I believe, last year, but I don't think we had a policy really in place, so I'm really happy to see this, and I think this is a, a good service that we are offering to our citizens.
Great, great. All right, very good, okay, next one.
This is item D, Madam Mayor, this is page twenty-five, and this will be probably the last item for our assessor today. For joining us, gentlemen. And they're recommending that we adopt the ability to have an alternate member on the board of review. And I would just turn it over to them, but.
All right.
Explain the reasoning there.
All right, go ahead, Phyllis.
Yeah, so, you know, Michigan law allows for us to have alternate members on the board of review. What that means is, you know, sometimes there's scheduling conflicts, so on and so forth, and this would just give us one other person that we could maybe lean on if we need to. If not, all of our board members can make it to a meeting, and, and, and it would be exactly what it sounds like, an alternate board of review member.
Very good. And is it up to two, it looks like, that's what I saw?
Yep.
No, no more than two. Okay, council, any questions?
Nope.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep.
All right, very good, it's good to see you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you guys for taking this up for us.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll vote on these on Monday. All right. Very good. Mr. Manager, next one, dumpster. We've had this discussion.
Yeah. So this is on page, this is on page twenty-eight of your packet. This would be a license agreement for a dumpster enclosure for units three oh two, three twenty-two through three twenty-two on Culver Street. Basically, this condominium complex cannot keep their garbage inside of their building, and so they're looking for a dumpster location. What they're recommending and what, what they pass through historic commission is that they place the dumpster enclosure next to the Scooter's Pizzeria there. You'll see the, the picture, so this will be in front of you on Monday. We did have the attorneys review this, and again, it did go through the historic commission.
Questions, council?
Yeah, I know we've discussed this previously. What I did not see in the agreement, and maybe if I missed it, I could use some help, is that if the city has to step in, if the property owner, for some reason or another, is not complying with the license, and the city has to remove garbage or other refuse, what is the remedy for the city to recover that? I didn't see anything in the agreement that spoke to that. And if I missed it, does that situation make sense?
If the license was.
Well, let's say that for some reason or another, the property owner
Yeah.
did not keep up their end of the bargain, and the city had to step in and remove garbage. I didn't see anything in there that, that stipulates exactly what the city will do in the event that it's not being taken care of as it should be under the license. City has to call in, you know, Republic or someone to remove. Does that make sense what I'm asking? Yeah, if I missed it, let me know.
I thought it was down here.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yep, go ahead.
So you're saying if the, the dumpster's not being serviced.
Correct.
And it's on our easement, and then we have to come in and
Correct.
get Republic to do extra service, and how do we recover costs, or do, what's the remediation?
Exactly.
Sure, I can check into it.
If I may, so the bottom of page twenty-nine D, it might be able to be added in there under clean license premises, and what goes on to say. Might be a possibility, I think, so I'm good. So this was, I remember we had the conversation about the scooter trash location, and that's the other side of the building, because they're coming out their back door with trash, is that right? The scooters. So we already have the scooters trash.
Yeah.
They had to up, improve it.
Right, it's gonna just go next to that.
Right.
It's basically gonna extend, and he's redoing all the fencing, so it will all match. So, it'll basically be two dumpster enclosures. One will be for the condos, one will be for the Scooter's building. So one will be for restaurant, and the other will be for the condos.
Sorry, because you talked about this in history.
Yep.
Well, does that mean it'll take out that parking space and looking at the?
No, it's on the grassy area, there's bushes there currently on the side of the Scooter's building. It'll go where the bushes are.
Okay, I just wonder how they access that with the pickup truck or whatever they do.
There's a parking spot in front of it, and I think that they'll either just back the garbage truck into that area and remove it.
Can I make economics? I have an answer to that question.
Can I make economics? I have an answer to that question.
Okay.
Hi, I didn't want to interrupt, but I have an answer.
I'm sorry, do you mind introducing yourself?
Yeah, my name's Fredger Jerry. I own three of the units at one twenty-nine Grippa Street, Sagittuck Muse Condominium Building. This dumpster enclosure is for the Sagittuck Muse Condo Association, even though it's going next to the Scooters building, which I also own. The, the, the question, it just came up as far as how they will access. I met with two supervisors from Republic Waste who know the volume of garbage being used at the Sagittuck Muse building, where you have eight residential units up, some of them are VRBO, things like that. And then you have six commercial down. So based on their assessment of volume there, a four-yard dumpster takes care of it without a problem. You can vary your pickups between one and three days a week depending on, you know, the season that you're in. This particular thing going in was designed, we could make it fairly small. It's about six, six and a half feet wide. It's about six feet deep and about, and about seven feet wide, seven, seven or eight feet wide. It doesn't come onto the parking lot at all. It doesn't take any space at all. And the truck doesn't need to go in to pick up the dumpster. The dumpster is going to be a four-yard plastic dumpster. The guys open the gate, they pull it out, and they pull it out, then the truck picks it up, dumps it, the guys roll it back in. So it doesn't roll along the grass or anything. No grass is being cemented over, anything like that. But it does fix a big health hazard where all of these ninety-five gallon individual garbage things are currently being held under the staircases at, at the Sagittuck Muse Condominium Building. All those will go away. That fire hazard won't be there anymore. They won't be under any residential units. So I said, hey, we, you know, if it's okay with the city, we could put it next to my building on the grass where we already, already have an enclosure. I've also agreed with the Historic Board to have this, have the Scooters dumpster rebuilt to match it and painted to match it. I'm actually going to work with John Canars, like who did the front of the Scooters Grow Loco Burrito Building to help coordinate that to make it as, you know, appealing as possible for a dumpster enclosure. So the truck doesn't need to get in there and, you know, it's not a big metal one. It's a four-yard plastic on rollers.
All right. Thank you, Fred. Thanks. Okay. Very good.
Again, don't need, mean to interrupt, but this is Lauren Cato. I'm in-house counsel for the Sagittuck Muse condo association and also a resident. And I wanted to go back to the time to cure, in case we breach the agreement. So right now, paragraph six allows us time to cure within five days. But it does not, you're correct, it does not allow for the condo association to pay, to reimburse the city for any costs in case you need to step in and cure. So I would be happy to negotiate that with your, with your counsel. I am concerned about just the five days if we're going to reimburse for cure. I'd like something to say that, you know, if we commence cure, we have a little bit more time to cure just because of, you know, how difficult it is to retain trades these days and, you know, get everything done within five days. So I can just negotiate that language, tweak it a little bit, and put in an obligation for us to reimburse the city for any costs that you make, may incur if you need to step in and, and complete the cure that we have failed to do. And hopefully, that's something that we never have to address.
Okay, we'll let the managers take that up with our attorneys. Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right.
Likely we'll make the motion on Monday, contingent on working up.
All right, you'll let us know. Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's your notes. All right, Arbor Day Proclamation, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. This is on page thirty-three, Madam Mayor. And this is one of the items that's required to continue the city of Sagittuck as being a tree city.
All right, pretty straightforward, regular occurrence. All right, any questions from council? Very straightforward. All right, very good. Okay, next item's special event, the market at the SCA. Mr. Man.
Page thirty-five, Madam Mayor. Center for the Arts hosting farmer, their, their market, forty-one vendors, three non-consecutive dates, requesting the full parking lot closure, Culver Street parking lot on each occasion. They say that's approximately eight hundred guests, no music, no alcohol, no fireworks. They've attached their application. And so we did reach out to Fire and City. We have our comments. For the.
All right, good questions for council.
Yes, go ahead.
No, I just, I know they did this last year on maybe two different occasions. Were there any issues from it?
No, this did, this did come up last year. I think the concern last year was utilizing the entire parking lot. And it was a concern that was presented. We didn't hear any negative feedback on the, I think, the two occasions that they, they did do that last year. So.
It always seems, you know, startling because it's in the middle of summer and they're taking up a whole parking lot. But I know it's done by three o'clock, and it seems like a time that parking wasn't as big of an issue during those early morning times.
And just to clarify, this, this is happening because there isn't, there are events happening in their parking lot, which is where the market would ordinarily be. So there's a performance or. That makes, just, I'm just trying to understand.
That's my understanding, be aware. Yeah. So next year is their twenty-year anniversary, and I know there are quite a few events around that. Last year, we had the issue with COVID. There were no indoor performances at the SCA. So that's, they had the stage set up and couldn't really utilize that space. That's, that is my sense of that's what's happening again, is they have an event. Yes, Russ?
So these dates are going to be, they're going to have it in the main parking lot, and then continue to have the Friday events on those other Fridays, because it's every Friday, right?
It's every Friday.
So it'll be in the smaller SCA lot, and then these three particular Fridays will be in the larger main lot.
Right.
City lot.
Other things going on in their lot. Yeah.
Right, yes.
Sorry, June, June seventeenth is a Friday.
Yeah.
They're all Friday.
Friday. So it's that, the regular market just can't be in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Their, their parking.
Oh, and then I just recall last year, they worked it out with the high school, because the high school manages the parking lot.
Don't do it on Fridays.
Great relationship.
We do it after five o'clock on Fridays. Usually the high school does.
Yep. Any other questions or concerns? Pretty straightforward. All right, very good. Next item, special event, shamrock run, walk or roll.
So page fifty-one of your packet. Run, walk, or roll. So we did receive what I would call a late coming event request. I know there's a lot of back and forth with Jamie and the event organizer. And they're looking at doing some, some, a race. And they said they're going to have twenty-five to forty attendees. They're also looking into road closure on Mary Street. And again, just given the, the late coming event request, and it seems a little disorganized. And I will also mention that we're working with emergency services, both police and fire, on establishing safe parade routes, which will include barricades of some, of some type. It's kind of a uniform parade route that everyone is comfortable with from a safety viewpoint, in that it's just well organized. I would say this, this event and this application does not meet that criteria. I'm not inclined to have, recommend that city councils support this one, but would be happy to reach out to the event organizer to see if they could modify it in some way, which does not involve road closures and/or the need for safety barricades, what have you, especially given the, the low anticipated participation numbers. That's just where I'm at with this event.
I see a question then, Ken. No?
No, I'm, I'm mulling it over a little bit.
Well, they state they'll primarily run on the sidewalks, meaning they're going to run on the street as well.
Yeah, having, having been a race organizer myself, those are the exact questions I was going to ask is, I want to see a detailed plan for runner safety and the controls. Two is, based on this, and I don't want to pass any judgment, but it looks like this person is organizing this event for the first time. So I think your points are well taken in terms of, let's make sure it's done right. Because if it's not, it can result in some problems for the, for the city.
I'd say let's try for next year and.
Yeah.
On this one.
Yeah, and I think the, also, the fire department did not indicate approval or denial, so that, that is missing as well. So they've seen the application and, you know, without that approval or denial, you really can't do anything, so.
I'm in support of more running and activity events. Outside events are wonderful. I just want to have them done well and safely for everybody that's going to participate.
Just out of curiosity, it's cut off on this, but the raising money for what? OEE that's cut off?
Yeah, I had the same question. I wasn't clear who was benefiting.
It was, it's been unclear to us as well. I think Jamie initially, we were, we had an indicator that it was a non-for-profit, but we didn't think that to be the case. I mean, not that it's a big deal, but what is it, a wellness center or something?
Yeah.
It was a race for some children's organization of some sort.
But run through a private company. It wasn't like they were a non-for-profit themselves. They were putting this on.
But it was, the application did say it was for a nonprofit, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's cut off.
It's cut off.
All right. I just hate to squash anybody's efforts that are trying to come up with that. Is there someone that can help her, you know, organize this for the future? And like, come up with, like you said, a standard parade route and use the same parade route? Do we always want to use the same parade route, just so it, or not parade route, but race route? You know, I, you kind of want to diversify where you, you know, have those types of things. But I just hate to squash anybody's effort to put something like this together.
It's a great question. It's, it's been coming up a lot lately. And then, as I actually said at this morning's Sadaba meeting, the city itself is not an event organizer. We're here to facilitate and to help out, make sure it's safe, make sure it's, you know, run well. But, you know, we, we as city staff don't have the capacity to work out the logistics of an event. And this has been coming up time and time again where people just like, hey, I want to do this thing. Figure it out for us. And we're like, whoa, wait a second here. We're doing, we're doing other stuff. And so, yeah, I mean, I think they need, I'll just give an example quick and I'll make it brief. There is like this traveling, I don't even know, car show, for lack of a better term. A hundred cars going from Chicago around Lake Michigan, coming back. They reached out to Lisa Mize. Lisa Mize said, hey, can you help these guys out? I said, no, I, I really can't, but I can link them up with Sadaba. And they can give them some localized knowledge, and we can give them our event form. And they can, you know, fill out the event form in detail. But, yeah, they need to, you know, they need to put in some work, these, these events and event organizers and work out logistics and probably a long-winded answer to.
That's good. I'm just hoping that they have somebody to turn to on, you know, and you're saying Sadaba would be a good place to start.
And even Sadaba, you know, with the same example, the, the car folks, they're like, hey, we'll give you some localized knowledge, but we don't even have the capacity. So there is definitely a missing piece of an event organizer in Sagittuck. And I can't speak for Douglas, but I would imagine it's kind of the same. They have far less events, as far as I understand it. But definitely a need for an event organizer, and I don't know who's going to fill that gap going forward, but I think there's some ideas being thrown around.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, I would, I would just say I would support them working with, I mean, they could even talk to the Rotary about. I mean, there, there is knowledge within the community about how to do these types of races. There are plenty of people that have organized on those over the years. So once perhaps we get the guidelines in place that are being worked on with public safety, then it might be a better, we might have a better go at this. And I agree, I'm very supportive of people proposing events in the shoulder season. We've said in the past that that's something that we are really wanting to promote. But I just, I don't, I don't feel like they're there yet, and maybe we're not there yet. So it's a bit much to try to pull this off next month.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
So this will not be on the agenda Monday?
Up to the mayor, if she wants.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so. It doesn't need to be.
I mean.
Because they're not ready yet. It's not, it's not a complete application, basically.
I don't see. We don't have public safety approval yet.
No.
There's a few things missing from this application.
Okay.
Yeah, and like I said, I'll reach out to them and say, let's give it a go for next year and let's hook you up with the right people.
Yeah.
It's a little short notice for this year.
Good.
Yeah, the, the town crier race is in what, June? Who organizes that? They should maybe talk to them. There's the fall half marathon.
Yeah, there's plenty of people in town that you can have, you can meet at uncommon and get to the bottom of it, get some good tips.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. All right, the next three items are all related?
Yeah, starts on, starts on page fifty-eight. This would be what I would consider your second reading of expanded outdoor dining, what was previously known as pop-up patios. And so we've reviewed this. And Kate, she's here. So this is all, this is all her work. This is all her work product. So kudos to Kate for just doing, going through the, the whole gamut of networking with the community and working with the attorneys and bringing what I think is a very sound policy that's been vetted by your, your, your legal counsel. And so, yeah, you have three items that are all interrelated. You have an ordinance, you have a, a policy adoption via resolution. And then you have a scheduled fee adoption. So that just changes the fee, but you do that via resolution as well. So happy to address any questions that you may have, and Kate will probably be the one I'll turn to.
All right, let's, let's take the first one, amending chapter ninety-six. This is the expanded outdoor dining area license required. Owners or operators of bars or restaurants? I don't know that a cigar establishment is a bar or a restaurant, per the gentleman's question.
Yeah, I'm, by the way, Kate, you've done a really nice presentation of putting this all together. So my questions are more around, I think, just kind of defining what the mayor just said. The very opening here, the owners or operators of bars or restaurants. And later on in the second resolution, it's actually better defined, is that, and I don't think we had any bars that don't serve food that.
Technically have to.
Because they don't.
Technically have to serve food if you're a bar.
Exactly. So I think that, even though it's kind of subtle, I think it's an important point to make, is that this is for a restaurant or some establishment that serves food. So I, I just think that's something we need to think of from a definition standpoint, that it's not being open to bars that don't serve food. So that's just one point. Is it what?
You have to have, Sandbar serves food, for the record. Oh, yeah.
Yes.
They have food. They have warm food.
But they're, yeah, but they're technically not a restaurant.
They have euros. You can get a euro there.
Thank you.
The place on the other side of Culver here is.
New Holland, New Holland. And New Holland Distillery.
They don't serve food, right?
No, they don't. No, they don't. They don't serve food. Copper Craft. They do not.
Right.
I'm sorry.
So they probably have a different type of license.
That's okay, you know.
That's a distillery.
Right. It's okay, though. I think to be definitive, I think, is a good thing.
I think the title, we can make this. I think it's going to serve us well in the long run.
Okay, so just to be clear on that point, then, just kind of the consensus is to just remove bars and just have restaurants, or, sorry?
Yeah, and actually, I think there's later on here, it says all any food and beverage service businesses, another description that's in the procedures that have been written. So I don't know, I'd like to see that consistent language throughout the resolution, so it matches.
Okay, so we're not necessarily saying bars are, if they don't, so you're not, just be consistent with the language, is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
You know, this does say outdoor dining areas. It doesn't say outdoor bars.
Right. And it is for dining.
Right.
Yeah.
So are we thinking along the lines of you don't want parking spots taken if it's just adult beverages? You don't want parking spots? I like, we just haven't talked about it, whether, what our thoughts are with that. Do we not want parking spots taken if they're just having an adult beverage?
Well, let me, if I may, you have to ask yourself what our social district does, then.
Right, exactly. That's a good question.
Yeah, that's a good point. And, I mean, if I'm honest, I didn't see the bars utilize, the spaces utilized, like Wick's Park and Bodie's, you know. I didn't see that.
Well, they didn't. And I know from the owner of the Sandbar, he had no intention of ever doing something like that. But there is one other place that we'd have to.
Yeah. So as far as consistencies, though, that is correct. So if we're saying in one, bars and restaurants, then we should probably say the same thing here. Rather than food and beverage service, should we just say bars and restaurant? Or one or the other, whichever?
I think we should say food and beverage.
Food and beverage.
That would be my.
Does that make sense? Kate, do you have any opinions on this, as you hide behind the podium?
Just food and beverage service?
Does that make?
That's what I would, I don't know.
Is that good? So that.
How you all feel.
On page 59, then, owners or operators of food or beverage.
Food or beverage?
And beverage.
I mean, if the bars had really utilized it, I would have, I would feel differently.
Right. Is that anywhere else that it's, Russ, did you notice?
I did notice. That was the.
That was it, right? Okay.
Then here to.
Food or beverage service. Nope, that's okay. I'm looking, I'm finding it everywhere.
Okay, then into item B. I'm a little uncomfortable with the general nature of some of the statements, and I know that the actual application goes into further detail about this. I'm just wondering, it's an opportunity to align those as well. Because when it says be adequately illuminated, that could mean 10 different things to 20 different people. All right? So what does adequately illuminated mean? Be aesthetically pleasing and consistent with the general character of the surrounding area. Well, again, that's open to interpretation. So I think if we want to really get this right out of the gate, we should be thinking about not to be totally, you know, screwing this down to one idea, but to make sure that we've got something that the zoning administrator, who's going to be approving these applications, can reasonably measure against an ordinance that can be saying, okay, it meets the ordinance or it doesn't meet the ordinance. And I don't want to speak for Cindy, I think Cindy's on the line, but I just know from past experience that the better this is defined, the easier it is for us to consider applications. Makes it easier on the city staff.
Lauren, did you have a comment?
No, I just, you know, if it details it better, further down.
Page 67.
I feel like those other areas kind of go into more detail.
Yeah, they do.
Says no cement block and.
I think that's covered in the next one. And, you know, that's, go ahead, Kate. She's ha-ha. You want to stand up? Come up to the microphones so people can hear you.
Sorry. So the ordinance was written by legal, so, and then the policy will further determine our requirements on our end. So they supplement each other. That's the intention there.
Perfect. That's perfect. That's good to know. Because you don't want to, I mean, you don't want to keep repeating every one. There's one for one thing, and there's another for another.
Yes, and I think keeping the ordinance fairly, I guess, not vague, but kind of vague, and then having the ordinance be more detailed. It's, sorry, the policy to be more detailed, it'd be easier to change our policy going forward than to change an ordinance.
Got it. Good point.
To build on this, then, given Kate's comment about the flexibility in terms of us saying yes or no, or those only people saying yes or no. So does that mean that food and beverage is the best terminology to use versus restaurant? I'm just thinking of a situation where somebody says, well, I've got, you know, bottles of water and chips here, so I'm entitled to an outdoor patio.
Well, I was just nodding because I agree. I think there's some vagueness in saying food and beverage service, but I use that terminology just as recommended by legal. So if, I mean, if you guys want to be more restrictive and just make it maybe full food service establishments, or if we want to keep it kind of vague.
This is all, I mean, this, again, we talked about this in the many different public sessions that we had. So you start somewhere, and if it needs to be revised based on experience, then we can do that. But to try to figure out all the possible things that might possibly arise, we'd be here forever. And we at least need to allow the process to start, and then as issues arise, deal with them at that time. Would you not agree?
Yes, I agree.
Yeah, that's why I favor being explicit about being a food service establishment, not food and bar. We can always open it up to bars later on, but it's harder to push it back than it is to push it forward.
Got it. Okay, okay. Very good.
Would it be possible to maybe add a reference in the ordinance to the procedure? Just a thought.
To the policy?
Yeah, yeah, policy, excuse me.
No, as far as in this introduction of ordinance, right there, to refer to the policy?
Yeah, just say that more detail provided, and because it does get more.
Yeah, and it's a policy.
Yeah.
I think as the policy changes, then we don't have to change ordinance, that's fine.
Okay, so refer to the policy.
And I would just agree with you, Mayor, that it's, this is a work in progress for cities all over the country, and, you know, we have said this multiple times, that, you know, we will, it may not be perfect, and we allow ourselves to change as we go.
Okay. Yes.
So page 60, referencing what Christine had talked about, is the applicant pays in full the fee for, what are your thoughts? I mean, just doing the math, it could be upwards of $6,000 for certain establishments. It is a lot, but are we, there's that question, and also the question of if they want to do it month, like two months versus the entire amount, and I know that's in there.
Yep, let's hold this thought for a second. I want to try to keep one in each. So that's the last one we'll talk about, is the fee adoption, and then I think we can talk about it, if you don't mind.
Yep.
So any other questions about the expanded outdoor dining area ordinance? Supposed to be vague. Attorneys have approved this. We'll change the food and beverage. Okay, second one. Say anything about this one?
No comments.
Resolution, expanded outdoor dining policy, creating formal guidelines and procedures for handling the licensing of the public right of way to food and beverage service businesses.
Are you on 63?
I'm on 62.
Oh, 63.
Yeah.
63 just had a couple of typos.
Yeah.
If we can just fix those. Yes.
Yep. I just see the one. Is there another one that I'm missing?
There's the one in A.
Yeah.
And then I think there was one in C, form should be from. That's.
Okay.
Just to help you out.
And then to back up to page 60, there was a duplication under section four. It said shall take effect twice.
Good, shall take effect.
Where is that, Russ?
Page 60, item number, section four.
Yeah, effective date.
Yeah.
This ordinance shall take effect.
I didn't see that.
These day.
Please, everyone, read their pack.
Sorry.
This was a test.
We put that there intentionally.
They're like sitting down there cackling, saying, let's see how many of these they can find.
Sorry.
All right, that one's pretty straightforward. Any questions about the policy adoption?
So under the, Ms. Mayor, some of the policy itself, I think, and it was kind of alluded to just a moment ago, is that, do we intend to limit the number of parking spaces that a business can occupy, or is it going to be limited by their ability to finance eight months of fees?
Are we on Jay or Kate? Did we move up? Where are we at?
So I wasn't sure where to insert this conversation, but more around the policy of the city. Is the policy of the city, for instance, to allow to the restaurant, Bodie's, for instance. And I'm not picking on Bodie's particularly, but is Bodie's allowed to just lease one spot, one space, or can they lease three if they can pay the appropriate amount?
I know we were limiting it to two per establishment.
Well, it's limited eight feet by 40 feet, so that'd be two parking spaces. And then also, if you're, so if you're on Water Street, that's angle parking. We're allowing them to extend. Instead of eight feet, it would be 15 feet.
So the eight by 40 is two spots?
Yes.
Okay, so the two spots, so that means that they'll be paying 200, essentially $400 a month.
Yes, I will note that the lawyer suggested that we make it, so we make it that the applicants can select months. So say you want to do June, July, and August, then you would submit your application by May, and then you would pay for those three months. Because for fees, you want to pay for the benefit you receive. And if we force people to pay for the eight seasons and they end up not using it, eventually, it's kind of like a tax. So we want to make sure that the fee is proportionate to the benefits they receive.
Yeah, plus the fact that it doesn't tie up the parking space or two that is not being used.
Right.
Yes.
Right. Okay, so go ahead. Any other questions?
No, that's where I'm at with that, is wondering what we're doing with that.
So in Christine's case, since we have an example, knowing her, she'll want it from April till October. She wants it the whole darn time.
Yeah.
And we would expect her to pay.
To pay in full. Yes, that's what legal recommended.
That's what legal recommends.
Yeah, if we do.
Kidney, okay.
Well, yeah, if we do, like, tracking monthly payments, at that point, we're kind of like landlords, and it just becomes difficult tracking everybody's payment for, you know, just logistics and ease of administration. I think this makes the most sense.
Okay.
And Kate, there wasn't an issue with, say, they decide they only want to do three months, and who's going to say, get your stuff out of here, you only paid for three months? If they, if they stop, if they want it for June, July, and August, and their outdoor seating is still there in October.
Oh, it gets seized. So we have it where they'll be sent a notice, and I'm going to be sure to, you know, be tracking, make sure, calendaring out people's permit dates and stuff like that.
That's not too much of a burden on you.
So I can keep track and make sure to do timely notices to people, letting them know when their license is about to expire. And then we do a two-day written, prior written notice to the individual if they haven't removed their structures or furniture. And then at that point, it becomes our property, if they do not remove. So.
Kind of on that front, I would suggest that once a establishment pulls a license, that we require that they display that license, where it can be seen by anybody from enforcement that will know, you know, this establishment has leased four spaces, for instance, for this time period. That's quite common in many places where zoning enforcement can just walk by and literally look at it, because we don't expect everybody to memorize each establishment. Kind of like you have to put up a license that you have a liquor license or that you have a dining license. Something that can be easily seen by anybody that, you know, whether it's the fire department, police, code enforcement.
I don't know that we even necessarily need that, because it would be filed at the city, and all of those agencies have that, and getting to aesthetics, like, there's, you know, there's a fair amount of, if you're serving liquor, you have to have, you know, I don't know, I just, we sort of wanted to shy away from the signs and, you know, I think since we have, did you have?
Well, I have a suggestion. So instead of making it like a display, when we do issue a license and it does get approved, we could just notify fire departments, so Chief Janik and Betts and all those people, so they're aware. Maybe that could be a compromise.
Could we also ask that they maybe display the license with their other licenses that they have? I know the Liquor Control Commission requires they post their license. Maybe just include it with that. Somewhere, it's not.
Yeah, again, I don't think that's necessary. I think you're already, I think you're fine with what we've got. So that's.
I think if we all had a list of the establishments and when they're approved, I think we can police it pretty well.
I agree. All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have one more on a policy standpoint. So expanded outdoor dining, to me, is pretty definitive. Are we going to allow outdoor entertainment, live bands, PAs, music, things of that nature?
That's something separate.
Isn't that a whole different animal?
That is a whole different animal.
Yes.
So.
Whole different animal meeting.
It's adjusted in a different part of the zoning and policies for the city.
I think we have something, a policy or ordinance related to street musicians.
Right.
Yeah, and then outdoor music as well.
Yeah, it's handled elsewhere.
So it's allowed?
It is allowed.
It will be allowed.
They have to have a permit.
But they have to have a permit for it.
Right. They have to have a permit for it. Yeah. Or they're an establishment that has already been approved through planning commission in the city. Yeah. So, all right. Any other?
I want to make a comment, just because I noticed as I was reading through this, when I printed this off, there is a redundancy in my standards for approval. So I intend to remove number 15, because it's already previously stated in number one, understandings of approval. So I'm just making you aware of that. Not a big change, but.
Okay. That's one we didn't catch. Gotta be. All right. Okay. So I have a quick question. So are we saying that if somebody wanted to have just one space, they could have just one space?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Awesome.
And then for an establishment that, obviously, you know, we had the gentleman on the call from the cigar shop, he still would have an opportunity to do sidewalk seating, correct? With a separate application, doesn't have to do with the EODAs. It would be, because I know several people have some sort of permit through Cindy, where they can have seating on a sidewalk.
Yeah.
So that could be an option for him, is sidewalk seating, correct?
Cindy?
Yeah, she's there. Cindy?
They can call on you for sidewalk cafes, since I have a sunset date.
She's muted.
Well, she has a championship meeting. When I've asked similar questions, there are options for people who want to use the sidewalk, and that seems like that would be a good option for him.
Hi. I think there are a lot of establishments that have benches between the sidewalk and the curb, and that would be a good place if he wants to have a smoking area. Otherwise, they're not serving food and beverages, so he would not qualify for the on-street extended outdoor eating establishments. But there's options that he can choose. I don't really know. I also question places that really don't have food service, they just have takeout. Do they want to be included?
Cindy, I'm so sorry, but it's like a stadium echo here. I don't know if there's another device. I don't know what's going on. But let us please, we'll get back to you on the question.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate it. I just want to help that gentleman out.
Yeah, sidewalk cafe is a thing, and it sounds like Cindy had some ideas, so we'll circle, we'll get back to you for Monday.
What I can see happening is the food establishments, food and beverage establishments will be delighted. But then the next question will be from our businesses that aren't necessarily, oh, what about us? And my suggestion would be that they work with Cindy and probably devise a similar policy to have to be basically.
I know, we do license some retailers, like the store across the street here. I, I know, we do, we do have licensed some retailers, like the store across the street here, to put their goods on the, on the sidewalk. I'm not terribly in favor of that, but.
Right, and I, yeah, I think that was temporary because of COVID, that was a temporary allowance, yeah.
I think it was.
And I think it has expired, so they can no longer, and once they realize they can no longer, then they'll want to. They'll want something, but. We will cross that bridge, yeah.
Hopefully, we can make it clear to the businesses in town, so they know, and don't feel like they're getting in trouble, slapped on the wrist, because they have their things out there. You know, we should probably make some sort of announcement that this is no longer happening anymore, we can no longer have goods, you know, on the sidewalks. And then I just think about, you know, just the places that are over here that have anorondex chairs on the sidewalks, is that allowed? Is that, was that just during COVID, or, so I'm just hoping to have some clarification on some of those things. Because I'd like to see that continue.
Other questions along the fee adoption resolution, that was pretty straightforward. All right, okay, very good, with that, we're to public comments on any item, if anybody would like, we don't have anybody here. Is anybody online that would like to offer a public comment, hi Barry, I see Barry, hi Barry.
Hey, what up? Yeah, I just wanted to, I got two things, I'll make them as quick as I can, I just want to do on this whole discussion of food or not. I've observed that the New Holland Distillery is very heavily used with their little pop-up patio. So I hope you don't cut everybody out that doesn't serve food. The other thing I want to talk about was a little historical perspective on the muse. It's been a bane in the city's system for many years, because they didn't follow their own plan. But I want to remind everybody that the city gave up two parking places. On the Culver Street parking lot, so they would have access to that garage door specifically for trash. Bringing trash out to the Culver Street parking lot for pickup by the provider. So I'm afraid that the, you know, the properties changed hands over the years, I'm afraid that the people, the current owners bought a pig and a polk. But we, the city has already given up two parking places for trash removal to that garage door on the Culver Street parking lot. So that's just historical perspective.
All right, thanks Barry. All right, who else do we have, anybody else? Yep, hi Christina, see your hand.
Can I talk, can I talk again?
I don't know, we might, you know, maybe.
How many, how many spots can I have, is it, I, I don't, I'm confused about how many spots I can have now.
You can have two spots, right?
Christine, it's going to be, it's going to be forty feet, like, wide, and then you have fifteen, fifteen feet deep. Does that make sense? So instead of, in the previous application, it was.
The length of my building.
Eight feet by sixty feet, and now it's going to be reduced, eight, eight feet to forty feet, but if you're on Water Street, it'll be fifteen feet. Does that make sense?
Right, did we, yes, totally makes sense, once again, I'm concerned about cars hitting the patio. It's not a very big, if two, I mean, I, I don't know, I just feel like now we just went smaller, which obviously, that's not what I want. But now I only have two spots, so, I mean, I'll take the two spots in front of the Muse buildings, like, one that we gave up. I mean, it just makes like, now I just have two spots, and people are going to be turning from Mary Street, ah, I don't know. You're not going to be able to see my patio when all those parking spots are taken. I don't know, I think logistically, two on my corner is a little tight.
Hold on Christine, okay Kate, go.
Christine, so it, it's not necessarily two spots for you, you are located on angled. So it's going to be actually forty feet, I was just saying forty feet for a parallel parking spot is approximately two parking spaces. Sure how many parking spaces, that might be like four or five.
I guess that goes with what Russ was saying, that in both the ordinance and the policy. There is wording that none of it goes together. And there's going to be a lot of pushback with the not having food. So, I mean, I'm okay with whatever, obviously, I'm in this fight to the end, but I think there's going to be a lot of pushback from New Holland. A lot of pushback from Copper Craft, whether they use it or not, they have the money, they'll, they'll fight it, they'll do something, I mean, I don't know. It just all of a sudden seemed very vague, but not vague.
So Christine, the intention is to include both food and beverage service businesses, so it wouldn't be exclusionary?
Well, they just said it wasn't, if you don't serve food, you can't have it.
Food and beverage service.
Okay, yeah, this is, this is public comment, not debate, so let's, let's, why don't you come in and work with Kate on this? I think you'll actually be. Okay with where this is at for you, as far as other establishments, they will have, Christine, let, yeah, I'm just telling you right now, just let it. We could just not have this policy, and then.
Thank you, that's nice, I'm fighting for everyone, I mean, that's all my, that's all my take on it, is I'm just. You know, I want everyone to be involved, I guess.
All right, next public comment, please, anybody? All right. No correspondence, I didn't see any correspondence.
No, we might have a few things for, for Monday related to the, to the park across the street, but nothing for this discussion today.
All right, council comments.
None at this time, thank you, mayor.
Two questions, thank you, one is the status on the historical marker communication for locations with the History Center. Just want to get a status on that, and then status of the letter to the Corps of Engineers as well. So I know you had met with the township manager, interim manager, and just looking for, for an update, which I'm similar.
Sure, I'll be happy to put that in my city manager report.
Yeah, I think as far as historical markers, well, I think you and Mark.
We did, we had some recommended alternatives for the ferry landing, as well as for the one that was going to be in Cook Park or. So, and that was communicated, and I believe if I recall correctly, the city manager was going to communicate that to Eric. So just wanted to update that, that message has been received, and if there's any questions.
All right, very good, I'm all set, all right, with that, motion to adjourn, please. All right, madam, please call.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.